We'll call the meeting to order. invocation by Councilmember Jeffrey Darby and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember David Montgomery.
Father, we thank you for another day, Yolanda, to see, we thank you, Father, for your greatness, your goodness. We thank you for all things that you have done, all that you're going to do. We pray for those who are here, we pray for their family, we pray for those who serve others. We ask you, Father God, to bless us, keep us in your care. We pray for those who are sick among us, we ask you to bless them, give them healing, Lord, Father. And we pray that you give us direction to do the things that bring honor to your name, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please face our flag and join me in our pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, if you, or anybody in the audience who can't understand me, throw something at me and I'll let somebody else do this. Just make it soft when you throw it though.
And don't miss him.
Don't what?
Don't miss.
Yeah. Uh, roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
All present, council, in accordance with Louisiana open meeting laws and the adopted Bossier City Council meeting rules resolution, the city council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda items may approach and state their names and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council, shall be forthwith by the president pro tem, barred from further audience before the council unless permission to continue be granted by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No questions shall be asked a councilperson or the mayor except through the meeting chair. All other audience members are asked to observe the meeting quietly. City council has appointed the city marshals as the sergeant-at-arms and they have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting.
Any serving on your matters?
Yes, sir, we have Ms. Lynn Bryan from Keep Bossier Beautiful.
Okay, Ms. Bryan.
Good afternoon, thank you for allowing me to come and share a little bit of information with you about our work for this year. And I'll be very quick, I'm just gonna go through this pretty quickly, but I do wanna expand on a couple of things that I think will be of interest to you. So, on behalf of the Keep Bossier Beautiful Board of Directors, we're happy to share with you some of our events from this last year. We did a cleanup on Cypress Black Bayou, we planted trees in tall timbers, we gave away 225 trees. Thank you for allowing us to use the Brookshires Grocery Arena. We planted trees on the Arthur Ray T Parkway, some of you are in those pictures, thank you for being with us. We planted a community garden in Horton. We gave away more trees, 500 trees, at the Brookshires Grocery Arena with State Farm and Arbor Day Foundation. We removed litter in multiple places, but we worked with the Lions Club as many as well as others. And this is one of our projects that we're super excited about. Keep Bossier Beautiful donated this compactor to the Bossier Parish Police Jury and they installed it for us. And this compactor will replace five dumpsters that are on the hill behind the courthouse. And it will not only take the cardboard that was going in the dumpsters, but will also be able to include paper in our recycling and that will expand our recycling efforts plus minimize or decrease our waste hauling fees from the five dumpsters. We made enhancements at our Benton Road Gateway, the I-220 Gateway. Of course, Operation Clean Sweep, thank you for partnering with us year after year on this. We worked with the Young Marines planting trees. We've had three e-waste events this year, we've recycled so much electronics, it's amazing how much stuff we throw away. But we've been very grateful to partner with our businesses and would love to work with the city and help y'all dispose your electronics if that would be an opportunity for us. We have awarded multiple businesses in our community for keeping the interiors of their businesses clean and beautiful. And we worked with United Way of Day of Service, we had five projects in local schools. We worked with Pam Glorioso for a cleanup in District Nine. We had a Keep Bossier Beautiful cleanup and costume contest, that's our little winner there, little princess in South Bossier. We went to Plain Dealing and we gave away 150 dogwood trees to try and help replenish their tree canopy there and do some beautification efforts. And I'm super excited about this project, this is in partnership with you, of course, and with Sport Tran. We've got 38 brand-new trash cans that are going out by the bus stop benches and they're being installed actually as we speak. I'm hopeful that all these cans will be out before the year is over.
Can I, can I ask you a question about that Sport Tran?
Yes, sir.
Sport Tran paying to pick the garbage up, or did they pay anything towards any of those cans?
Sport Tran is, Wade put down the pads, Sport Tran is installing the pads, installing the cans, and they will pay to have those cans emptied. The city of Bossier and the city council purchased the cans for us. So it's a partnership. Uh, we're excited to work with not only Shreveport Green, but Mayor Arsenault and Mayor Chandler and the city council to sign an agreement to join up with Keep America Beautiful for the greatest American cleanup. Our goal is to pick up 25 billion pieces of litter before we celebrate our 250th anniversary in two years. And along with that comes a whole host of activities that are required. But I want you guys to know that Bossier is in the mix and we're gonna make sure that those things get done. We had a cleanup on Cypress Black Bayou. Of course, we, we remember our soldiers and those who lost their lives on 9/11. Uh, we are educating students to go into ball, ballgames and teach them about recycling and helping them recycle. We're in our third anniversary with our prior project called Bossier Parish Prisons Recycles. This is our third year, we have been recycling cardboard and tin from the prisons. The only recycling program in our state that has incorporated recycling into corrections, so we're very pleased to be a part of that. And we've put about 144,000 pounds of cardboard and metal into recycling and decreased our waste hauling fees there as well. Uh, Keep Bossier Beautiful was at the table for the Keep Louisiana Beautiful Annual Conference, we were one of the presenters and we were very pleased to be a part of that project. And we are in a campaign now called Put the Brakes on Litter, it's a $10,000 investment in our community. Uh, we're partnering with Keep Louisiana Beautiful and we've been on the TV, we're on billboards and in the newspaper, just trying to get the message out to encourage people to not litter and also promote our 1-800-litter number. We do have a 1-800 number that you can use now to call if you see somebody littering. And the Lieutenant Governor did hire a person just to answer that phone, so it's not just going to a voicemail somewhere. So we're excited about partnering and helping to spread that news. And we also have other people other than just... One of the things that we wanna do at Keep Bossier Beautiful is to have multiple people be our voice. So, we work with state police and anybody really who's willing to, to preach our message will let you have an opportunity. If you guys would like to, I'd love to, to sign you up. So, um, that's, that's some of the things that we've done, it's kind of just a highlights where there's many more things that are on our website or our Facebook page, but we've got coming up our tree cycling in January on the 11th at Cypress Black Bayou. We will be rebuilding our tree canopy with tree giveaway in District Six and Seven, that's Brownlee-Green Acres area sometime in the first part of the year. Uh, we'll do another cleanup in District Six. And I wanna tell you a little bit about implementation of our outdoor classroom. We have purchased a cargo trailer and we are hopeful to be able to pull that cargo trailer up into the parking lots of our elementary schools and rotate the fourth and fifth grader students out of there around there while we're in the parking lot with our canopies, our tables and our chairs and our educational material. We're gonna use educational litter environment material created for students by Keep Louisiana Beautiful. We'll have a certified teacher that will be teaching that. And so, we're super excited about bringing litter education to our young people because there's no room in the curriculum that we have where there's room for that to happen now. So we're, we're hopeful that we can raise up a generation of leaders that will do a better job of keeping our streets clean and safe. So, Operation Clean Sweep will be early this year, it'll be the weekend before the airshow, that's March the 22nd. And then we'll have Love the Boot Week in April, uh, April the 5th to the 13th. But in addition to these projects that we've done, all of our numbers are up high, we're still doing all of the work that we have always done. But we've made a real strategic shift in our work to do some direct donations into our community. We've received over almost $30,000 of grants this year that have just come in to KBB and went straight out to the community, which we're very happy to do. And we're really working to promote education in our programs now. So, we're happy to partner with you, we thank you for your leadership and your support. And I would love to entertain any questions that somebody might have.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you, Ms. Bryan.
Okay, thank you so much.
I see some young people back there, y'all with, uh, y'all wanna come up to the mic, tell us who you're with, what group you're with? Just tell us what school and what group.
I'm, uh, Austin Smith from Airline High School and I'm with Bossier Youth Leadership.
Uh, I'm William Stuckey, I'm from Airline and I'm also with Bossier Youth Leadership.
All right, well, y'all can watch and hopefully learn something, who knows? All right, counsel, any...
Counsel, we had a request for the agenda to delete new business, item number 13, at the request of the department head.
So move.
Second. Any questions from the audience?
Do you wanna approve the agenda at the same time? Remove item number 13 under new business.
Is there two changes or just one?
Just one, but keep...
Okay, yeah, we'll do it at the same time.
I see any questions from the audience?
Good afternoon, counsel, mayor, Cassie Rogers, Bossier City, Louisiana, 7/11/12. When I saw the agenda item for the Keep Bossier Beautiful on the agenda, um, it made me question something that I had brought to the council or to a councilwoman several months ago, 5/29/2023, about the Veterans War Memorial right out here, which I believe is called Bossier Caddo Veterans Memorial. Um, it needs to be resurfaced, I have gotten confirmation from the mayor's office and I wanna thank the mayor for that, from Mr. Ford, that he will be resurfacing that Veterans War Memorial out there. But other than that, I'm not sure how to get the word out except saying it here with you guys. Um, I have right here in my hands some order forms, there are approximately 773 small bricks, 95 large bricks, I counted them today, that could be turned into larger bricks, you have bricks ranging from $50 to $300. And it's not full. And so I would like to extend the opportunity to my fellow veterans or family members of veterans that would like to have a brick out there. I have my best friend who was killed in action July 4th, 2011, his is out there. Um, I'm also looking forward to putting mine out there now that I'm retired and I just wanted to make that available to everyone because I'm not sure how the word could get out. But I figured if I said it here, we'd be good to go. So thank you, mayor's office, for making sure it gets resurfaced, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let me see here. David, did you get a second, I'm gonna approve the minutes?
Yeah, we're gonna do them both and Brian's second and all in one motion.
Approve the agenda and...
As amended.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Williams, did yours pop up?
Yeah, it popped up and it went away, here it is.
Motion carries.
Yeah, approve the minutes of the November 5th, 2024, regular council meeting dispensed with reading.
So move.
Second.
We need to amend the minutes of the November 19th, 2024, to change the minute date under approval, uh, the minutes from November 19th, 2024 to November 5th. So last week they were inadvertently, uh, labeled as November the 19th, they need to be November 20, uh,
November 5th, 2024.
Uh, and we need to approve that it's November 19th, 2024 minutes as amended and dispensed with a reading.
I'll second that. Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Any public hearings on the, any unfinished business?
Motion carries. It wasn't popping up, so I'm trying to... Adopt and ordinance creating and establishing the Bossier City Prosecutor's Pre-Trial Diversion Program, Special Revenue Fund, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto, final reading.
So move. Second.
Counsel, any questions, comments? Any comments from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt and ordinance adopting detailed estimate and exhibitions of the various items of receipts and expenditures of the diversion program fund for the city of Bossier City, Louisiana, for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2024 and ending December 31st, 2024, to serve as a budget of expenditures during the fiscal year and appropriating the amounts herein set forth as the budget of expenditures, final reading.
So move.
Second. Counsel, any questions or comments? Any comments from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt and ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached Cooperative Endeavor Agreement, granting a 10-year, $20 million ad valorem property tax exemption unto Louisiana Riverboat Gaming Company, LLC, final reading.
Second.
Counsel, any comments? Any comments from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
New business.
Adopt and ordinance amending ordinance number 133 of 2018 by changing the zoning classification of a certain tract of land being .335 acres, more or less, from RMD residential medium density to B2 limited business located at 636 MacArthur Street, Bossier City, Louisiana, for a proposed commercial storage building for Tubbs Enterprises, first and final reading, and favorable by MPC.
So move. Second.
Any comments, counsel? Any comments from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt and ordinance amending ordinance number 133 of 2018 by changing the zoning classification of a certain tract of land being 1.387 acres, more or less, from RA residential agriculture to B3 general business, located at 1843 Innovation Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana, for a proposed convenience store and fueling station, first and final reading, and favorable by MPC.
So move. Second.
Any questions, counsel? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt and ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City, which affected property, public health and safety due to the requirement to replace an eight-inch gravity sewer main at 100 Willow Lake Boulevard and reestablish service connection on the gravity sewer main at 1203 Violet Street at a cost of $33,680.96 to come from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund, first and final reading.
So move. Second.
Counsel, any comments? Any comments from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing an ordinance creating the competitive position of chief of administration of the Bossier City Fire Department pursuant to Louisiana Revised Stat Sheet 33:2481.6, first reading.
So move. Second.
Counsel, any questions?
Uh, yeah, Mr. President, I do. Um, chiefs of honor, is this, is this coming in net neutral, are you adding a position or...
No, it's net neutral up until June, I had two deputy chiefs, one retired in June, one in July. We replaced one, we left the other one open. This will put a chief over the support staff and one over the operational staff.
Okay, all right, so basically just filling a position.
Any questions from the audience? All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to enter into the attached amended local services agreement with the Parish of Bossier and to execute any documents in furtherance thereof, first reading.
So move. Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing an ordinance amending ordinance number 49 of 2024 appropriating additional $52,379.62 from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund to replace the Northeast Waste Water Treatment Plant Generator, first reading.
So move. Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Mr. Hammond, did yours pop up?
Yeah, it just did.
Motion carries. Introducing an ordinance declaring the fire safety trailer surplus to the needs of the Bossier City Fire Department and donating same to East 80 Fire Department, first reading.
So move. Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing an ordinance to approve report of reconciliation and project construction closeout for the Barxdale South 24-inch water main and consolidation project with an increase in project cost of $283,631.61 and adding an additional seven days in change order number two. Surplus funding from water sector programs required matching contribution will be supplemented to the Water Capital and Contingency Fund, first reading.
So move. Second.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing an ordinance to declare the completion of the Citizens Bank Drive Pump Station Project, including change order number one in the amount of $48,161.73 and adding an additional 96 days and to amend ordinance 105 of 2022, leaving a surplus of funding to supplement the 2018 LCDA bond and construction of the Citizens Bank Drive roadway extension project, first reading.
So move.
Second. Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing an ordinance to transfer $3,962.22 from the diversion special revenue fund to the general fund, first reading.
So move.
Second. Any comments, uh, counsel? Any comments from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing an ordinance to amend the 2025 general fund city council operating budget to redress the salary of the current city clerk, first reading.
So move. Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a part-time office manager receptionist in the... receptionist in the city clerk's office. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second. Counsel, any comments?
Yeah, I think somewhere in the near future that it would be a really wise choice for us to get away from making this a part-time job into a full-time job with the length of time that it takes for someone to become fully qualified to become the city clerk of any city. It's not something that's just done overnight with our current city clerk. I mean, she doesn't wanna work here till she, till they carry her out of here. So, I think it would really be beneficial for us to start making, looking to making this a full-time job, start training that person to one day become the city clerk. If I'm, if Madam City Clerk, what does it take? Four or five years to?
It's a minimum of three years to get that. And as of right now, the charter requires it's an international institute position. And so, they would have to go to Arkansas, Mississippi, or Texas to take classes there. And usually the classes are a week-long class. And then you have to have so many years of experience before you get that certification.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So, I really think that we need to make this a full-time job, but we'll go ahead and do it as a part-time right now?
There'll never be another Phil, so will it? They call her to teach classes. Counsel, any other comments? Excuse me. Any comments from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution for public work... I'm sorry, that one was deleted. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a personnel specialist in the Human Resources Department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second. Counsel, any comments? Any comments, questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring or promotion of a council clerk to, due to resignation and backfilling any vacant positions this may create in the customer service department. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second. Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Got any reports? Any announcements, Counsel?
Mayor.
He didn't ask me yet.
I think the mayor does.
I had something, yeah.
I didn't write you down yet, Mayor. Okay, go ahead.
He said Counsel didn't say Mayor yet.
I just wanted to make sure you weren't forgotten.
I didn't see that on the agenda. Nice one. Wish, I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving over the past, last week and hope everything went good on that. I had a good staff meeting this morning. All the departments saying everything's going great. That was a great staff meeting this morning. Michaela Williams, who went to Parkway, LSU is playing Gramlin this Sunday afternoon at 1:30 at the Brookshires Grocery Arena. And I have been offered to help, well, do the ceremony with her retiring her jersey from Parkway, which that's gonna be a big deal. And thank, you know, thank her for all the things she's done for Parkway and LSU because she's put Bossier City on the map, not only Mary Ward's daughter too, but it seemed like we got a lot of good things going down at the LSU women's basketball. I wanna invite everybody to come see that happen Sunday at 1:30. Thank you.
Anybody else got anything? You're gonna turn. Nice.